So good morning, everybody. We'll bring this meeting of the Foothill School Division and town of High River. Meeting called to order and we'll adopt the agenda and I'll ask for councillor Coe to make that motion.
I will give you that motion Deputy Mayor Mestron.
Thanks very much. All in favor. Carrie. And the foot, the, the agenda was circulated a while ago and then it was re-circulated this morning to us. So the first order of business is a little bit update by the Foothill School Division. So I don't know Drew, is that going to be you or? Who's doing that?
That's Chris Possessi, our superintendent.
Okay, so well. Just. Okay, sorry, I've just lost my picture. I have done this before. So go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I guess we'll give you a two-part update. One kind of an overview of the incidences, if you will, of a COVID positive individual being associated to a school. How many times we have worked through that process at Foothill School Division this year? It's upwards of about thirty-five different occasions on this point. When I say that, we may have intervened and done the close contacting that's required of us from Alberta Health right now and Alberta Education, more than thirty-five times. Speaking about school, specific interventions here about thirty-five times. We have, I guess, developed some proficiency, though none of us have a medical background on close contacting. There are six of us, the four members of the executive team, including myself on this call, as well as our communications manager and our risk and materials manager who handle all of that close contacting and communicating out to the community. As you know, back in the spring, we did, I guess, block access to all of our buildings in High River during the Cargill outbreak. Reopen that probably at the end of June, put a lot of time and effort into building a handbook on how to reopen and relaunch schools in September. That's available on our website. If you'd like to access that, it's probably about eighty or ninety pages long at this point and is regularly updated. And that is the information that our schools used as the mandated guidelines to develop local plans to reopen their schools in September. So all the risk mitigation strategies of cohorting being the main one that we, I guess, place the greatest emphasis on, as well as, you know, controlled entry, controlled exit, staggered times for recess, splitting up the playgrounds, for example, with different groups of kids, masking, hand sanitizer, hand washing. All of those things are in there and our schools, I think, did a wonderful job of implementing all of that. When we look at the size of the cohorts within Foothill School Division schools, the maximum number of students within one or two cohorts, it's more complex at the high school level, would be about sixty to seventy students who would need to be directed to self-isolate and that includes our high schools and those schools have bigger numbers. And so our school leaders did some exemplary work on really fine tuning their schedules. And when I say that, it really was rebuilding their schedules from mid-August because that work gets done in May and June typically. They rebuilt all of those in order for our kids and our communities to be as safe as possible. More recently, we have been working closely with Alberta Health Services in the Calgary zone as well as some doctors and resident doctors in High River in particular. They've been working with Joe Clark School as well as Spitsy School to gather information from parents around what information they feel they need to know to make informed decisions around COVID, around the guidelines, around the public health orders and around vaccinations which are upcoming in our future. There was a town hall with those doctors as well, as well as one of the medical officers of health in the Calgary zone on February twenty-first. That was kind of a trial of future town halls to see what the format was like, what the discussion was like and to gather feedback from individuals. So we've got another one scheduled for February first as part of our council of school councils meeting at six thirty PM. All of the parents at Foothill School Division are welcome to attend. Both Joe Clark School and Spitsy School have another town hall with that same group of doctors. It's Dr. Xiahou from Calgary Zone Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Adam Weiss from High River, and Dr. Fenola Hackett and Dr. Yu Nan Liu, who are residents working with Dr. Weiss in High River. February third, we call Joe Clark, February ninth, Spitsy School. I may have those reversed, but it's definitely the third and the ninth. And then we're also putting together a February twenty-first date for the entire Foothills community, Foothills County community and all the towns within it and hamlets, which will be those same four individuals again to get that accurate health information out into the community so that people can make informed decisions and determine what's best for their families. We do have a school, multi-stakeholder school relaunch committee or school division relaunch committee as well. That includes parents and administrators and all of our different employee groups as well as members from our trustees and the executive team and those two individuals who make those COVID decisions along with us, the two managers I cited before. And we're thinking about repurposing that committee to start looking forward to what does post-pandemic education look like? How do we transition back to that? And maybe attenuate some expectations in that process because one of the biggest pieces of feedback we heard back when we were cancelling things was athletics is important and is important. Those extracurricular activities are important and I'm not sure we'll go from zero to a hundred. When we reopen schools, that might be a slower transitional process to once again ensure that we're doing it safely. So I think that's a an overview. I invite my colleagues to add anything I may have forgotten or overlooked in that quick overview. Thank you.
I'll just add, Chris, that we've isolated hundred and fifty-four staff to date, nine hundred and forty-seven students and nine visitors between positive tests and requirement to isolate. So we're over a thousand individuals at this point. Unfortunately, some of those have been out a couple of times.
Thank you very much, Chris and Drew for that update. Are there any questions? I don't see any hands up. If there's, if there's no questions, I guess we'll, we'll move on to nutrition and that's also the Foothill School Division. And who's presenting on that?
I believe Caroline Roberts, our Assistant Superintendent of all things learning, will be presenting on that.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. Just an update to our nutrition grant. So we've had a nutrition grant in Foothill School Division from Alberta Education over the last number of years. The context of the grant initially was in serving our elementary level schools. It was then expanded a little bit to include junior high and high school. But in the spring, when we moved from in-person learning to learning from home, we also got approval from Alberta Education for flexibility around that grant. And so that's when we made it available to all of our schools across our system. And then it supported students and families during that time. We are very happy that we also received the grant for this year and so we distributed those funds across all of our schools, across the division to support our students and families in nutrition for this school year as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline. Anybody have anything to add to that? Carol, I see Carol McMillan's hand up.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor and thank you very much for the Foothill School Division team to speak with us today. Caroline, how much is that grant?
I think the finance piece I'll get Drew to specifically speak to. We, we distributed equally amongst all of our schools this year based on student population.
Thank you.
Carol, I'm going to get the number wrong, but it's around a hundred and forty-four thousand a year that we receive.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Thanks very much Caroline. We'll move on to election twenty-twenty-one partnering. And again, Foothill School Division is, is leading this discussion.
Yeah, thanks Bruce. Just all we wanted to do here is show our appreciation. Kara and I worked on the elections together last election. It makes complete sense to continue to work together. Doesn't make any sense for us to try and hold our own elections. So we're very appreciative of the town, their willingness to partner up on the elections in the last number of periods and you know, we're looking forward to another good positive election with minimal amount of angst. Appreciate Kara and all that she's done to, to work together with us on that. So really, that's all we're, we wanted to say is we're looking forward to doing that again and anything we can do to make it easier for the electors certainly something that they appreciate. Kara, anything you wanted to add?
I, I just want to give everyone an update that we will be bringing forward a report on regarding the election to the February twenty-second council meeting. So we're just in the process of doing that. So council can look forward to that coming forward.
Okay, thank you Kara. Thanks, thanks Drew. I believe the only thing I might add to that is based on a decision that we made at council on Monday, we'll also be having a referendum question on the ballot. This, this election on, on a new aquatic center for High River, a fairly large potential expenditure and, and we, and we thought the electorate really should be deciding this after they have all the information about how much it's going to cost, how much it's going to cost individual taxpayers, that type of thing. So just, just a heads up on that. So any other, Larry, I see your name. Hand up.
Sure. Hi, thank you. Just to sort of add in a little context as well, as you know, trustee Christensen resigned her position a few months ago back in September. And just to give you an update that at that time, the board determined not to hold a by-election because we had basically one year left until the regular election. And so just want to thank Bill for helping cover. So Bill is looking after Spitsy School and I'm looking after the others in High River. So we attend their school council meetings regularly and keep in touch with their communities. And we're addressing any concerns or issues that they have and pardon me, are doing our best to make sure that High River is well looked after at our board table with any issues, et cetera. So just wanted to provide that update.
Okay, thanks. Thanks Larry and Bill. Much appreciated for you stepping in on, on that on behalf of High River and, and just how your, your position there, it looks like you have a halo. So that's very, very fitting. Oh, there we go. Any other questions? I don't see any hands up. We'll move on to the next agenda item and actually before I forget this, I really should open my email before starting this meeting because Kara had sent a note adding joint use agreements. A discussion on that. So we'll, we'll, I'll just arbitrarily add that to the agenda, even though it wasn't approved. And we'll do that right at the end. And insurance rates update, Foothill School Division is leading this as well.
Thanks. Just a quick synopsis of where we're at from insurance perspective. I think we reported on to you a year ago that we were struggling with getting insurance. We joined a group, a new group of boards that went out to marketplace using Marsh to kind of do risk managed insurance program. It's called Armic. We're with about thirty-six other boards. Unfortunately, because of the hard market that we're in from an insurance perspective, they really had difficult time getting insurance in the spring. It looked like we were going to have some pretty favorable numbers, but after the floods in Fort McMurray, again, this past spring, there was a couple of schools that were involved in that. So we were back to the point where it was very difficult for us to, to get insurance. The group split up into two groups, a pool A and a pool B, unfortunately because of our floods back in twenty thirteen here in High River. We're one of the boards that suffered catastrophic losses. So when you look at our experience, ten-year experience, we're certainly net losers, not net contributors to insurance companies. So we're unfortunately part of the pool B. We were able to get insurance this year. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. If we didn't get insurance, province would probably have to step up. They did step up from the perspective of helping fund the first five million dollars in losses. So we were able to get insurance, but even after, after we had a just under a million dollar increase in insurance costs last year, we're around eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar increase on top of that this year for twenty-twenty-one. The province did agree to provide assistance on property insurance for pool B boards. So we did receive albeit about fifty thousand dollars in, from the province on that. So we, we don't know what's going to happen next year. But the insurers tell us that we're still in a hard market and not to anticipate anything great and wonderful next year. So we're, we're still to the point where we're relying on the province. We're hoping for a longer term solution rather than every year we go back hat in hand. You know, we've been lucky. They've, you know, stepped up last year and this year, but with the financial situation that I think the province is going to be in, it's probably going to be difficult for them to continue to do that. So something that we're talking with our MLAs about. And it certainly is going to cause issues when it comes to budget time for us, but that's just to let you know where we're at.
Thanks. Thanks very much Drew. Any questions or comments for Drew? I don't see any hands up. I, I think I probably in, in the interest of, of doing things properly and staying on the right side of Kara, I think I would ask for an amendment to the agenda that we add joint use agreements, discussion. I don't know if that's a proper way of doing that Kara, but I just hope we should maybe have that.
I'll move that Bruce.
Yeah, thanks so much. And all in favor? It's carried. Thank you. The sorry, I just realized that Kara sent me a script. So thank you Kara, keeping, keeping me honest here. We'll move on to the agenda with council's vision on community growth. And I'm not sure who's presenting on that.
Chris?
Hello Ed, do you want to speak to this? Because I know this leads right into the school site planning that you prepared that memo that's attached to the agenda. So.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I can add it to the, to the presentation. So good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council and party participants from the Foothill School Division. I'll just add it to the, to the presentation that I have prepared here, which I will just share with you guys in a few seconds here. Okay. Can you guys see it all at this point? Okay. Okay. So we do have four potential school sites, part of the planning for a school site within our community. And I'm going to walk you through what are those sites and what's, what information's available. And then I'll talk about the joint use agreement between the three parties. As you could see here on this map, in the northwest, we have two school sites. Each school site is fifteen acres. And in the southeast, we have two school sites and each school site is ten acres. And so I'm going to just talk about each one of those school sites in a few seconds here. The two school site within the south, High River Air Structure Plan. Each school site is ten acres. These school sites were selected in nineteen ninety-six. So it was like twenty-six, twenty-seven years ago. And at that point, the process was different. So I'm not hundred percent sure how those school sites were selected. Just to make sure that, I'm not sure whether we freely kind of viewed our, reviewed our record, but we could not find very clear process on how the school site was selected. One of the school site is located within John Montis, which is here. This is school site. And the second school site is located within Montrose Community. The, even though the southwest dyke is complete at this point, we know for sure that the province has been working on their flood hazard mapping for some times. We have no idea the actual timeline of that project and when the final approved flood hazard mapping will be available. And so we know for sure also within John Montis land, there are floodways that needs to be respected at this point. And so, and even after we receive sufficient information from the province and that's, that may support, you know, developing that site within John Montis before we can make any decision. The South High River Structure Plan need to be amended. And so that process also will add up to the mix here. But the site which is located here on Montrose Community, that is readily available at any time. But it's just ten acres, which may not work well if the school division is looking for a bigger site. And we had that discussion with the, with the Christ Redeemer of School Division and we can highlight some of the discussion that we had with them. And the reason, as I mentioned, for the, the site within the Montis, John Montis, because even though we have the southwest dyke completed, but still there are floodways as we see here. And still the provincial flood mapping hasn't been completed and it's been restricted. So we, it's difficult to support any movement if the school division has interest to move with that site. So at this point, it would be, it's difficult to consider that site before we have all the information from the province and whatnot. The two school site within Spitsy, Area Structure Plan. Even though they are readily available, but still they don't have access to servicing. And so that would be a challenge for both school divisions to access a site that doesn't have servicing in place. And we don't have any timeline at this point as to when the servicing will be available. We know that for sure the property owners are working, you know, regularly with each other, trying to come up with solution to address servicing of the entire area structure plan. Developments and whatnot, but that hasn't been finalized at this point. I know for sure there were some efforts maybe a year or two years ago between the Foothill School Division and the Christ Redeemer School Division that they wanted to relocate one of the schools which is here. They wanted to relocate this school because of the transformer to this site. And they met with the property owners and they had some discussions and we've given them some support that the town doesn't have any objection if the school divisions and the proprietors agreed to relocate the site and have a larger joint site. And only thing we would require is to amend the SP to reflect that kind of change. And so that effort has stopped at the end of the school divisions and the property owners. We know they met together, they've talked about it and they agreed to move forward, but they haven't communicated to us the process that they want to follow. So this is really in a, in a, in a, in a nutshell, the school sites, which is school sites are available and what are the challenges? The only school site which is readily available for the school division as we speak is the one located to Montrose Community. That school site, even though it's ten acres, we had some requests in the past from the Christ Redeemer that they want a larger site. And so we did communicate with Dream Development and asked them whether they would be able to expand the site from ten acres to fifteen acres to accommodate a larger school. And they did agree and they are willing to expand the site. But they have made a clear decision that the five additional acres that would be added to the site to make it fifteen acres, they would not be able to add it and, and give it as part of the municipal reserve dedication because they did have over dedicated their MR requirements. And so that five acres will have to be purchased by the school division that might be interested. So that's just available there, but it will be, you know, at your cost if you wanted to have a larger site within Montrose Community that is bigger than ten acres. So that really provides the overall school sites availability within our community. The challenges that come with it and then it's, it's, it's at your discretion if you want to move forward with any one of the side at this point. The even though, just for quick, although the town doesn't have a written guidelines for school site planning, but town administration historically followed a process that is relevant to legislation and implemented it based on the intention that we need to always make sure that we have it in place. So, and that included that we always ensured that they needed, the need for a school site is assessed at the proper stake in the planning process. We've always ensured that the key stakeholders are engaged in the planning process. So the both school sites, both school divisions. Also, we've ensured that the roles and the responsibilities of the key stakeholders are very clearly understood by all parties. And also, we've always made sure to promote joint school sites. And this is really, it's always in the background and it's very clear intention that whenever we met with the school divisions, we've always promoted the idea of, you know, having joint site for both schools so that it's sustainable. It allows us to be creative. It provides a lot of opportunities for everyone. The joint use agreement, I'm just going to highlight quickly here, the town, Foothill School Division and the Christ Redeemer, we've worked together and we have a draft joint use and planning agreement. At this point, it's at the final stage. And with all, all the three parties, a kind of work in good faith to come together and, and draft the draft agreement that we have in place right now. The draft agreement outlines the maintenance standards, booking procedures and financial agreements. But also acknowledge the importance of community-wide approach to join use and planning of sites, which means also included the future sites selection, community benefits through outdoor recreation sites, optimal use through coordination and, and planning, developer of trust among all parties. We know for sure, this is all done in two thousand and nineteen. So we knew for sure at that point that there was a great urgency from the Foothill School Division to finalize the agreement and bring it forward for support and, and, and signing off by the town administration or town council. But since the provincial election, it seems to us that the priorities for Foothill School Division have shifted and therefore we have a and therefore we haven't received any follow-up. We have followed up with Monica, who was the director of uh, development within the full school division. We followed with her many times to re-initiate the process and finalize, finalize the draft agreement. But we just never received any uh, clear signals as to whether the, the school division was ready to move forward or not. And so that is still left um, in its current draft stage and the town is ready. If the full school divisions are prepared, we can revisit the process and, and, and finalize the, the agreements and bring it forward for um, approval. That's what I can provide about the uh, the uh, the uh, the, the joint use agreements. Uh, with regard to uh, growth, I think I can share, um, I'm going to stop this and I can share a graph that shows the latest and greatest uh, growth numbers that was based on a study that was done by the uh, Calgary Metropolitan Regional Growth. And I can share with you that uh, graphic in a few seconds here. So this is really uh, the growth projection for the town of High River, which indicates clearly that we see uh, steady growth throughout the years. Uh, even though maybe at a decreasing rate, but definitely it's an increasing rate at all the time that we've never seen any decline. Uh, and so if you see here from the, let me just uh, so if you see from here, right from two thousand eighteen, two hundred twenty, when we are fourteen, two thirty eight, we're going up eighteen thousand and all the way to thirty seven thousand five hundred forty-two by twenty seventy-six. So we've never seen any decline and there's no any concerns on that regard. Having said that, we will have an opportunity when we do our town plan review to revisit these numbers and ensure that they're aligned and that there is, they're accurate. And if there's any adjustments that may be uh, completed, but I'm not sure that it will really impact the long-term growth that we see based on this latest study. So that's all I can say at this point. And if there's any questions or comments, I'd be more hap- more than happy to uh, provide more information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Cleve, uh, for the presentation. Uh, I, I think you quite seamlessly uh, but uh, covered three agenda items in one presentation, which is great. Uh, thanks for that. I was just wondering if you could take the screen sharing away, uh, just so that I can see any hands. I have, uh, does anybody have any, any questions or anything to add? Kathy, uh, color or Ca- sorry, Councilor Kui.
Uh, thanks, Brisona. Thanks, Lee, for that. Um, a, a couple of questions and I'm hoping that some discussion will come forward about this. Um, because it's, it's always been a bit interesting to me, this whole process for school sites. Um, a question, um, I don't know if this is for Drew or who, but how often do schools, um, whether it be the school division or, or province wide, how often do they have to purchase land to build the schools um, uh, versus being a municipal reserve? Do you see that often? I, I'm sure you try to avoid it.
Yeah, actually, the responsibility um, to provide land for schools is in municipalities or the municipal reserve land. So we've never bought land for school. Don't know what circumstances we would do that. And I know one school division that did that, they speculated Rocky View did that a couple of years ago when they were growing like crazy. They speculated and, and purchased land, which they later subdivided to build a school and sold the rest to a developer and um, and did well on that piece. But usually, um, their, the school divisions don't get involved in purchasing land. So it, it surprised me, Khalid, when you said that, uh, that's something that the school division be responsible for.
Um, and just clarification sake, if I recall, and, and I could be totally wrong. Um, a high school and elementary does it re- have different sizes. One is, how many acres do you require for each?
Yeah, thanks, Kathy. And it, there's a lot of variables, but usually we're looking for fifteen to twenty acres for a high school. Um, ten acres roughly for an elementary school and somewhere around twelve to fifteen acres for a junior high. Depends on the grade configuration and how the, the, the plot is actually, you know, how the land is actually laid out. Um, so it, it does vary and depends on the size of the school obviously as well. We're usually looking for right around the twenty acres for a high school and, and twelve to fifteen acres for a K to nine or a junior high.
Um, thanks, Drew. And this might be a, a bigger conversation than, than just for this group. But that site that's posed beside the power plant. Obviously, we know why the developer has chosen it because nobody wants to live there. But there's also concerns with having our children playing in a playground beside it and lots of questions about um, um, the impacts of those power plants. False or true, or, you know, all of those stories and, and theories that are out there and, and sciences. But how do we or can we in future protect those municipal reserve sites um, from being aligned with something that is a potential hazard and, and cause these potential questions? Um, I suspect, you know, the negotiations are not easy with developers and, and they feel they're giving up the world. But now we've been left trying to come up with a solution to how we can rejig these lands or use them properly. So, um, again, just a out there statement, I just, I just see there's some real gaps, whether it be MGA within planning. Um, you know, in two thousand thirteen, I was staggered when you pointed out that we had a subdivision or an ASP that was going to double our population, but didn't have enough school sites out there to accommodate that growth. So I, I just don't know how potentially we maybe do some better planning or, or lobby for some changes to ensure these types of problems don't exist.
Yeah, we've seen that quite often and Khalid knows this as well. When the developer wants to give you the slew or wants to give you the, you know, the land that's uh, not as favorable when it comes to the municipal reserve. So that actually has to be done very early in the planning process that hey, that's just not an appropriate area or place for, for that municipal reserve land to be. So it is a process, I think, that we can be involved in and town planning can too. And, you know, when we're starting to look at area structure plans and starting to look at, at development plans.
Thank you, Drew. Um, and uh, Councilor Kui. Uh, and does anybody else want to address that particular question? Drew, go ahead.
Sorry, it wasn't that particular question. I was going to address the joint planning component. But go ahead, Bruce, and get the others taken care of first.
Um, I'll just, uh, yeah, actually, maybe I'll, I'll just go to a council of work first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Mast. Um, I was just wondering if you could tell me what your current needs are for schools in High River. I, I know that we have a census coming up this year and you will see if our growth projections match with uh, with the actual data from the census, but um, but that there is a specific need or demand uh, for what else school division or additional schools in the High River at this present time.
Thanks, Don. I can, I can address that. Um, right now, our numbers have, have actually decreased slightly at uh, all of our schools. So we do have capacity, uh, certainly at Riley and at Highwood High. Spitsy was the school that was in, uh, was our biggest need from a growth perspective. That's why I think around four years ago, we changed the tennis boundaries for Joe Clark and Spitsy. Right now, that's our biggest area of uh, concern and it's, and it's not like front burner. We need a school next year, but uh, Spitsy and Joe Clark are the, are the schools that are the most full in High River. Um, with uh, COVID, we did see quite a significant number of students choose home-based learning. So online learning at home. So it's, uh, that's an anomaly. We expect most of those to come back. But really, we're, we're probably looking at elementary school or a K to nine school next in High River.
Thank you.
I don't, uh, Don, your hand just went up again.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Um, I don't see any other hands up. So Drew, did you want to address?
Yeah, I did. Um, certainly the, the board, I'm going to speak on behalf of the board. We're, we're not uh, wanting to slow down finalizing joint use agreements. Um, we did want to take a sober second look at the way things are looking, but we're prepared to move ahead. Um, Monica hasn't been with us for a year now, so there are some things that uh, we certainly can pick up. So Khalid, we're, you know, we're prepared, myself and uh, Mr. Ming Tian to get right back involved in those joint use discussions and get that finalized as soon as we can.
Good, good news. Uh, thank you, Drew, and uh, and thanks, Cleve, for that. And Bill? Uh, you're muted, Bill.
Okay, Eric, I'm on.
No.
If your council is looking at a new aquatic center, um, where is local a bit in relation to a potential school site?
Did, did everybody catch that? I have to admit, I did not. Um, I'm sorry, Bill.
I can answer that, Bruce, if you want.
Okay.
Go ahead. I got, um, so in regards to the aquatic center and, and if it goes through, where would it be? Is what Bill's question was from what I heard. Um, it would be an extension to the existing pool. Would not be in a new location. It would just in extension to the west of the existing pool.
Oh, if we looked at a K to nine school and say, put it in the Montrose area, how close in proximity would those two places be? Any idea? Because I'm, you know, I just look at a map and I'm going to think, well, where, where about is that?
Yeah, you're, you're definitely walking distance to it most of the time, even in, yeah. Um, most of the year anyways.
Yeah.
Minus forty, no.
I think it's excellent idea.
Just to comment on that, um, the, the provincial requirements um, for schools have changed drastically as far as flood plains. So now they're looking at one in five hundred years. I, I am concerned that both of the Montith and the Montrose school sites, um, whether or not that they now meet the criteria for Alberta education when it comes to potential school sites. So that's something that we'll have to get figured out.
It's nice to hear that an organization has finally figured it out. We're trying to get one and two hundred to the provincial government and to the uh, Calgary Metropolitan Region Board. And it's, um, it's not going to happen. They're not going to go for it. So that's great that the school division has it figured out, that the school boards.
It's not, it's not the school division. That's Alberta education.
Alberta education, sorry. Yeah, well, maybe they should uh, email a few other departments up there. Thanks.
Any other, uh, any other questions or, or concerns? Um, if, uh, if not, I believe we're done. I, Carol, sorry.
Thanks. I find this new reaction thing slower than before when we just had the hand. Um, just thinking about uh, vacancies in the school. Do you have any um, creative ideas about how to fill Senator Riley and Highwood High? Or is it based kind of on that revolving? Um, if Spitsy and Joe Clark are so over full, but by the time those kids are ready to move on, I'm just kind of wondering if there's any kind of creative ideas about how to fill those vacancies.
Um, Chris, you might want to, to speak to this as well. But right now, you know, we, we have had conversations about, you know, should we looking at reconfiguration? Um, at this point, schools will fill whatever space they have. So my telling Highwood High that they're at, you know, sixty-five percent capacity doesn't mean that they're not in every space in that school. So, um, yeah, we, we would certainly like to, to get more students in there. But um, that's a process that the board will have to take a look at at some point, depending on the direction that those trends keep following.
Yeah, I can add that, that if that's okay, Bruce, that um, this is a discussion that we've had over the last couple of years off and on with the board, not specific to necessarily creative use of space per se. Um, but more around the grade level configurations in the High River area. And, you know, perhaps moving to align those um, with configurations elsewhere in the division, which is difficult to do because we have a variety of configurations in every one of our communities. Um, having said that, when we start to tease that apart a little bit, um, making adjustments at one school. So for example, if we were to take grade nines out of Highwood High School and put them at Senator Riley, um, what does that look like on the footprint at Highwood High School? They then become under-enrolled. Um, you know, we could look at Blacky and Kaylee, for example, in grade eights there, our grade sevens and eights, and then we have more schools under-enrolled and some schools that are closer to capacity. One of the things I've learned in the two years I've been here and having these discussions is that there are historical reasons why um, those configurations exist. And, you know, they're not necessarily good or bad historical reasons. They just explain why uh, we see some under enrollment if you look at capacity as the standard for enrollment uh, in some of our schools. So it's an ongoing discussion. In terms of creativity, we did recently um, approve last year an alternative education administrative procedure. Uh, and we did receive a, an alternative program um, application, I guess, the best way to put it, that the board will be looking at and making a decision on in two weeks. It doesn't affect the High River area per se, given that the location would be a school uh, in Oka Tokes that this, this individual group of teachers brought forward. Um, but we do encourage schools to look at those creative and innovative um, programs to see if we could grow them and elsewhere in our school division. So, um, the only other thing I would say about creativity is one of the things we want to talk about. And I mentioned that little relaunch committee that's multi-stakeholder. One of the things we want to talk about moving forward is around creativity and innovation. And what has this pandemic taught us from that sense and that lens? And how do we carry that forward? So that may be able to contribute to the question that you're asking here. Uh, because we want to tap into staff, community, uh, parent, student voice on that and see what that could do so that, you know, we don't rush back to what we used to know and we carry forward what was innovative um, once we get to the other side of this.
Thank you, because and that's imperative to have the parents and the stakeholders perspective. I was just kind of thinking about the other day, I've been reading about more STEM programs happening at the more the high school levels and just thinking about all these new learnings about how we've all been handling this new online programming world, just wondering, because I think those are also things that attract people to High River. Uh, because when you hear about different unique um, educational opportunities, parents are very progressive and they want different things for their kids. So I thought it was just kind of a win-win to help High River grow. And um, you know, because I'm very happy. I, I love, I have to give credit. I love the foothill school division. I, uh, we moved here with our boys when they were three and five. Best decision ever. The quality of the education like Spitsy and just, just great all the way through. So kudos.
Thank you. Larry?
Thanks for that comment, Carol. Appreciate it very much. Uh, just another example of, of what the board has done over the last ten, few years in terms of looking at, at sort of capacity and, and being creative in, in the delivery. So, um, we, and I know that the previous board had started it, but we continue to have conversations with Grant Christian School, um, who are part of Pelisser. Um, and they were looking to relocate. So our staff um, put in countless hours um, working with them and looking at alternate sites if they were to leave Pelisser. And um, we had gone quite a way down the road with that, very, very supportive of it. Uh, and then uh, they chose to uh, stay where they're at and, and at portables to their own existence. Uh, and then, uh, they chose to, uh, stay where they're at and, and add portables to their own existing school. So my, my point in telling that story is that we continue to look at how can we, uh, draw more students to Foothill School Division, um, because we completely agree with you that, uh, we provide quality education and are very responding, uh, to the community's needs. And so, um, again, just another example.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Councilor Kui, you had your hand up and now it's down. Are you okay? Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions? I don't see anybody's hand up except Larry's. Unless you want to go again, Larry. Um, okay. I think, uh, I think maybe we've come to the end of this, of this meeting. And, and I thank you all for, uh, for, uh, uh, doing this. Uh, I know we, we had a couple of cancellations. I'm just glad that we were able to, uh, to finally pull this off. And, and, uh, and it's, it's great to, um, to get together with, uh, with foothills and, and, uh, and just bounce ideas around and, and I, uh, um, so very, uh, very appreciative of that. And, and I will, uh, the special council meeting on January 27th will be, is adjourned at 9:51 AM. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks for meeting with us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.